Very popular in town. We know that. Here's some things I'd like you to put on your calendar. There's going to be a celebration of life for Joanne Chapman at Ball Mountain Camps on June the 25th. That is going to occur between 12 and 3:00, 3 o'clock in the afternoon. And if you, most of you may know Joanne or know of Joanne. She was chair of this board at one point in time. She was from Connecticut. She was very involved in volunteering in the community, very actively committed to the school. And so if you knew her and you care to be part of that, please place that on your calendar.
She's in the Delta program.
Right. I can't hear him. Why can't I hear it?
Next year, if you don't know where that is, you go past the Rangeli Library. It's at the end of the street, across from the Catholic Church. It's the White, White House on the corner. The board is hosting the food for that event, most of the food for that event, which Johanna has graciously agreed to cater for us again this year. And it's an opportunity for us to also celebrate those faculty members that are retiring and leaving the district. So even if you just stop by for 20 minutes to say hi and grab a sandwich, or can stay longer, it would really be nice for you to be there.
What time is that?
It's June the 21st. It starts at 2 o'clock in the afternoon, Danielle, and then it just kind of goes until it opens. So you can come in three or four and it would still probably be going up. On the next day, June the 22nd, that is the last day teachers are going to be in the building. It's a workshop day. And Deb and I, as chair and co-chair, are hosting an ice cream social for the teachers at 12:30 to cap off their lunch. So if you want to come have a Sunday, say goodbye to folks for the summer. We would be very pleased to have you there.
And Deb would love it if someone else would be there to help scoop ice cream because I have a doctor's appointment that day in Stanford. So I will not be able to be there. I can help get materials, but I won't be there on Thursday. So somebody else will step up.
So if you're interested or you can do it, you're going to be around. Give me an email, shoot me an email, and I'd be more than happy for the help. One other thing I want to mention is cell phones. I think we've developed kind of a bad habit in this group of emailing and texting.
Where I don't need a paper copy, so.
And I understand that. I don't expect you to turn them off because I know if an emergency occurred, you're going to want to be notified. I'm just asking, let's not email and text. That's all I'm asking.
Like, for example, we're just putting those dates in our calendar.
Yeah, oh, I understand. I understand. I understand. I'm not trying to make people sensitive. I just think that they're out.
So no more passing electronic notes to pop up.
Or texting one another during the course of the board meeting.
Wow. Mary, you're taking all the fun out.
I know.
What's the, where's the basis in law for this? I'm looking for that.
Uh, superintendent.
Thank you, Mary. First of all, as you all know, our budget passed. Thank you. I'd just really like to thank, give a special thank you to the board, the staff, the community, for your support for the budget process. It's a lot of work, but I feel like, I feel really good about the budget that we brought. I felt like it was a responsible budget that meets the needs of our students. So thank you all. An update on the COPS grant. I know I've updated the board on this, but I want to update the community as well. RJ Goen and Associates came on Tuesday to start their very comprehensive assessment of our building. What I can say initially is that they were very impressed with the condition that our building is in. So they're going to do a number of different assessments. They'll be assessing at night. They're going to send up drones. They're going to, you know, for lighting. They're going to be doing the whole thing. This is being paid for by a grant that the Franklin County Sheriff's Department applied for. It is the School Violence Prevention Program Grant. Three districts are involved in this particular grant. Mount Lou is also a partner with us, but I believe they just recently had one done, so they weren't part of this. RS278, Stratton, and SAD78 are also a part of this. So we'll see where we end up. I'll keep you guys posted on how we fare with this. Lindsay Richards is taking advantage of a grant opportunity through Winter Kids Outdoor, the outdoor program. Five schools will be awarded up to $10,000. And so the winners will be announced August 1st, and I'll let you know. So with any luck. Lindsay's been very, very active with Winter Kids. Winter Kids knows our Rangeli School very well. We take, we've been, I don't know how many times we've, we've gotten in to, you know, as a contestant. So we're pretty lucky to do that. Sean Russell, Sean Russell is a pretty special person in this building, I'd just like to say. And the MPA, the Main Principles Association, awarded him the Unsumperal's Award. This is a very prestigious and special acknowledgement. He goes out of his way. He works many, many, many hours outside of his day to record athletic events and put them on YouTube so that everyone can see them. People are in the know. And this is a, you know, this is just something that he took on himself. He was not asked to do this. And so we're very proud of you, Sean, and congratulations.
Thanks. All the other people did great, too. All I've been able to do is convert it from a snowboarder to a skier.
And I'd also like to just let everybody know that class day is tomorrow at 12:30. And anyone can attend if you'd like to. It's, it's a lot of fun. The kids, I think, have put together a pretty special day. It's always supposed to be, you just never know what you're going to get with class day. So please feel free to come. And graduation is 1 o'clock on Saturday. If you would like to attend, you are welcome to sit in the staff section with the rest of us as board members. So.
The AC getting stoned?
The AC getting stoned, yeah.
Just asking. Asking for it.
Yeah, and that's all I have, that habit is that. It's only going to be 63, Chris. It's only going to be 63.
I have, Seth isn't here tonight, but I have a video he recorded earlier today. And we'll have him not be here, so I'm going to try to play that. Hello, sorry, I am not at the meeting, but I am at the recital at the Good Shepherd Church. We have a number of students, I believe, elementary. And I know my, some of my middle, some of my high school kids are taking part in that tonight. So I got a couple of personal invites. So I'm at the church supporting those kids in their performance. This week, we had some sports banquets. We had the middle school baseball and softball. That went great. And then last night, we had baseball, high school baseball, and varsity skiing. It's always nice to get together. Thank you to the boosters for feeding the families and the athletes. It's always really appreciated. Tomorrow night is our last Portrait of a Learner meeting. It's the meeting where we unveil the finished portrait, the graphic competencies and descriptions. I'm really excited about that work. It's been a good process. We have a really good result. And I'm just excited about making it a reality. Next month's board meeting, I'll present that. Boy, schools, we're getting through this week and the last two days are next Tuesday and Wednesday. On Tuesday, students in 6 through 12, 6 through 11, sorry, our 12th graders will be not with us. We'll be outside having fun for part of the day. We'll start the day with an assembly, our final assembly. And then from 9:30 to like 1:30, the 6th and 7th graders are going up to the Trail Center. And the 8th graders are joining the 9th, 10th, and 11th graders. And some kids are going to Ball Mountain hiking. And others are coming to the pond, Haley Pond, to do some paddling and have a lunch. Then we're going to come back and finish up with an assembly. And then on Wednesday, come in the morning, kind of clean up, clean out lockers, get our stuff together. Rotary barbecue will happen. Thank you Rotary. And then we will go home at noon. I want to thank the Rangeli Heritage Trust for working with Mrs. Richards. For the last month or so, she's been doing water safety. We've been having kids go down to the pond for their PE class, and they've been on the water, in boats, paddling, learning canoe strokes, boat safety, maybe a little bit about the pond, a little bit about wa, the water environment. So that's really a nice thing. And Rangeli Heritage Trust and Amanda La Liberty have done a lot, bringing canoes over, unloading canoes, and just working with the kids. So thank you for that. And finally, I want to say thank you to Jeff La Rochelle. It's no secret we've been struggling with our bus drivers, having bus drivers the last few weeks, or the last month. And he has driven a lot, constantly shuffling schedules, making games work, making field trips work. It's just, it's a lot of work, and I can't believe we accomplished it. And parents are very understanding, and I thank them for that also. But a typical day, we played Athens in middle school one day. Ms. La Rochelle started the day with driving the Mcgalloway Loop, late start Wednesday for Foster. So drove Mcgalloway, came back, took the Foster's kids to Farmington, stayed with them, drove the Foster's kids back, loaded our teams on the bus, drove to Athens, which is an hour and 25 minute ride. We played our games. We got on the bus. He drove us back to Rangeli. We got home at 8:30. Jeff switched buses and got another bus started and drove that out to the campground to get ready for his next morning run. So he probably got home at like 9:30 that night and probably started about 6:00 AM. So he just really gave it his all to make as many things as we could work. So thank you, Jeff, for all your hard work this spring with transportation. That's all I have. Everyone have a great night.
I was here earlier.
Must be present to win.
Yeah, 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 I guess so, yeah. Have you driven Route 16 lately? It's not an easy task.
Oh, it's terrible.
Or a two-inch gap between one rain and the other. So it's quite a, quite a thing.
Yeah, he's been doing everything. Incredible.
Good.
I'm going to turn it over now to the student group. Nicole, are you the only one this year with us tonight?
It's just me.
Okay.
But I have some things I'll try not to say that's already been said. But the quarter ends very soon, I think on Friday. And we just finished all of our finals, almost our other projects. We have math left. That's about it. The sophomore class had a car wash at the bank and it was donations only. And we made about $2,000.
Wow.
Awesome.
And we plan on doing another one around Labor Day when we come back to school. We finished our schedules for next year. The seniors went on their senior trip to Boston, which I heard was fun. And tonight is senior night at Sarge's. And we finished high school baseball and, as we already talked about, the banquet. So that's all, all I have.
Nicole, please.
Given that this is the last meeting for you during this whole year, just share with us a little bit of insight. What's been the most beneficial part of this experience for you, sitting, sitting on the board? I was thinking of discussions.
I think that with being on student council and on the school board, I hear a lot more from students about their insight on like things like the scheduling and like planning for activities, maybe that needs to come to the school board and be accepted. And I just think it, it's a lot more informational for me. And I feel like I can share with you guys. And I like being helpful, I guess.
That's great. And I have to say, I'm extremely proud of your participation and that of your classmates. I think it's wonderful that you guys speak up and share your opinion when there are topics that we're talking about that a student perspective is really important for us to hear. So we look forward to having you with us again next year.
And I heard you did a great car wash because my father-in-law is extremely picky. He went over there. Not one bad thing is said. Well done. Trump, Trump car to freeze.
We're going to move on now to the committee reports. We'll start with Kathy and Policy.
Okay, well, we had a policy meeting on June 5th. And we have completely finished with our 2019 policies, getting on to the 2020s, keeping a three-year cycle going. And there are actually a couple of policies that have to come to the board, but because Kim Loyer is not around, we're putting them off until July. And so we'll bring them to the board in July. And there will be no policy meeting in July because our normal date falls on July 3rd. So it's a holiday.
Paying out.
Yeah, they're paying us great money. And then, so we'll meet them in August first Monday.
Kathy, I have to share that in all the years I've been on the school board, and this is my fourth cycle, I guess now, given that we just got re-elected. But I don't ever remember that the policy handbook was current consistent with the three-year cycle at all point today. And that's clearly been your leadership over the last few years. It's very, very much appreciated.
I had wonderful help and I can't say how much to him.
I know Kim has been, but appreciate it. You're appreciated.
Definitely.
Big welcome. Finance committee, Chris.
We had another fantastic finance committee meeting tonight. And we tracked very well for the year. As expected, stayed within our budget confines for the most part. I feel like we're finishing strong, as is everyone. Unfortunately, I had to miss, it was Portugal or Budget Review Committee. So it was, it was a tough call.
Such a tough call.
But, but I heard you got by without me, so that goes to show that the work can be well without me, which I didn't know that, so now I do. And I think we're, I think we're on track. If you looked at the budget vote, I've been involved with school since '08, '09. '09, we first full school year, year '09 to '10. And I've never seen a budget change by such a large margin. It's usually like maybe 65, 35, but it passed 80%. And even some of the, some of our small municipalities who often it's like pretty even, was pretty heavily towards. I'm assuming there wasn't a lot of people at the budget committee, but to me, I think the public has seen the work that's being done right from the ground level all the way up through. We've got positive feedback from staff on having opportunities for input. And we've tracked well with our budget. We're, we're working not from a traditional government spend it if you got it in your budget to a, I consider more of a spend thrift budget where we're trying to work at, what do we need in order to provide a good educational experience without going overboard? Other communities have had uproars and fights and millions of meetings going through their divided boards, boards not even signing warrants. And we've, we've had a good year and we tracked well. And I think that's a testament of all of us as board, all of us as community. I feel good that at least one section of our community has some consensus on it. So I'm very happy. I'm looking forward to another, we have another year coming up, and I think we'll have another strong year. We've built two good budgets these past two years with a lot of unknowns because of COVID. And we're moving in the right direction. I will say that our committee meeting today, we took some of the things we're dealing with. We dealt with some stuff related to the teacher's hourly summer rate, and we tied that to a formula now so that it can follow logically rather than arbitrarily and tracks with everything with the contract, which I think is fantastic. And I can't say enough about Roxanne. She's been awesome. And we are very lucky to have somebody that was able to come in. If you'd asked me five years ago if we were going to find somebody that could fill Sheila's shoes for being here a long period of time, I'd have said no way. Especially in the worst labor market ever, that we are very blessed to have her. And I think her and Georgia have been a great team to get the stuff done. And many thanks to all the department heads and all the way down through the staff to work collectively. A, a good testament to the budget is that everyone can live with it and we can work with it. And I think we've done that. And when you get an 80% mandate from the public, it tells you we did something right. So great job.
Thank you, Chris, very much. Appreciate your leadership and effort. Facilities committee, Danielle.
Okay, we met June 1st. We had a pretty good meeting. We talked about the fuel tank, which we've had issues with. Smart comes up every two weeks to inspect it, make sure there's no fuel getting inside. So far, we're good. We're waiting to hear back from DT. We're getting pricing on what it could possibly replace the tank or if we have to, or maybe switching to propane also. And then we are waiting to order fuel until we know because to move that or it butterdust again, or it makes, it would be a huge risk.
Do you guys have any feelers on what, what fuel prices are that are going for, Danielle, right now, that we could lock in it? Or are you just waiting until the tank gets resurfaced?
Yeah, right now, we haven't, like, it's still in this year's budget. So we haven't even discussed the price of fuel yet. But so far propane has held pretty steady. And oil has been so up and, like, it's been so up, I can't even say it's been down. So it's been so up that so far, it's looking that propane could, maybe in the long term, be a better solution, but we're not really sure. We're trying to just leave it open so we, you know, can figure it out then. The bus, the new white small bus is doing great. I mean, so, much so because we not had a driver that we even, you know, kind of threw in, maybe we should get another white bus for next year, just in case. We do have somebody, maybe a new bus driver for next year. We're hoping. It's not a complete guarantee yet, so, but maybe. We have somebody in mind.
That's exciting to hear.
Yes, so hopefully we don't have to deal with this, but just in case. The middle school science room bid, somebody is hopefully coming to bid on it. And the cabinets have been ordered for it. Yeah, so that's done. They should be here soon. We're just waiting for somebody to.
So is that science lab going to be done this summer, Danielle?
That was the hope. I mean, we are hoping if somebody comes in and gives us a bid, because at this point, somebody come bid, then we wanted it done this summer.
I'm twisting this.
Yeah, so hopefully, fingers crossed, everybody pray. So that's where we're at with that. Paving, we got a quote from Bind Line to do the road and the sidewalk. Sidewalk is ours, I said that last time, but. And that came in at $39,000. And then we're just waiting for a bid from Binding. And then we're still unsure if we're going to do that exactly when.
So it's going to be from the roadway up to the parking lot, not the parking lot, but the sidewalks and, and the entrance.
Yeah, and the sidewalk will have to be completely redone, not just like, you know, throw on top. The lights to the walkway have not been working. So we were quoted $3,000 to have them replaced because it's a safety issue. So it has to be done. And we are unsure if we're going to, if it's going to come out of this year's budget or next year's, depending on when they can get in to do it. And then we're putting, or we put our John Deere tractor up for it, our old one. We did get our new one.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Any questions or comments on any of those, any of those committee reports? Okay, moving on then to appointments, resignations, nominations, and transfers. Georgia.
Okay, here we go. I got a long list here. Oh, no. Okay, so I am transferring Allison Loud, who is our current second grade teacher, into our technology integrator position. She is, she has a master's degree in educational leadership with a concentration in computer science. So she is going to be a phenomenal, you know, phenomenal teacher in this realm. So congratulations, Ally. Ally wanted to be here tonight, but she's also at the recital. So she gave her apologies for that. I am nominating Karen Murphy as our first grade teacher for next year. Karen has a degree. Karen, please fill in if I leave something out, okay? Because I'm going to give a little bio on you. Karen has worked for us in a number of capacities over the years. She started out as a DSL teacher for a student in kindergarten, a Spanish-speaking student, a while back. This was when I actually first started teaching in the district, like back in 2007-ish.
You know, 2011 and 12.
Oh, okay. And she also has a degree in secondary French and has been working on her elementary endorsement and hopes to be endorsed next fall. Is that correct? Okay, she's been working really hard. Yes. And did I leave anything else?
Well, I had a really great year, and I want to thank you for that opportunity. I was a long-term sub for first grade, and that's just where it all started for me this year. It was really hard to let go of that class. I got really close to that, those group of kids. They were really fun to work with. But then I stepped into the role of Ed Tech 3 academic interventionist. So that was a really good opportunity for me as well. I had the opportunity to work with a lot of our staff in K to 5, really dynamic teachers, lots to offer me. So I'm super excited to work with them still. I have two kids in school. They're in elementary level, one heading into middle school. So that's really fun being involved here at school and also watching them on a day-to-day basis. That's fun.
So welcome, Karen.
Thank you.
For the role in the district.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion?
So move.
Any question and comments? All those in favor? Unanimous to vote again. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congrats, Karen.
Thank you.
We're lucky.
Okay, I have a second nomination for our second grade position. I'm nominating Vanessa. She is a, she is a recent graduate from UMass. And she is a 2019 alumni. Did I get that here right? Okay.
Up here?
Yeah, up here. Yep. Her mom also works in the building as an Ed Tech in our special education department. So she did her student teaching here this winter with us. And she's been coming into sub in second grade and third grade or first grade or any grades around there. So she's really been kind of jumping in to get a few wins. So I'm very happy to nominate Vanessa.
Would you like to share anything more with us?
Yeah, I'm just excited for the opportunity to be back, to be a teacher when I graduated. And student teaching here really showed me that like this is where I want to be and this is home and the community. I can really be a part of it all in a different way than when I was at the student.
I think it's a testament maybe to your educational experience here, you wanted to come back.
Yeah.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, for sure.
Congratulations, Vanessa. Can I have a nomination? Thank you. A second. Any questions, comments, or all those in favor? Congratulations, Vanessa.
She's been waiting so long. It was all dependent on the budget passing. She's been waiting for a long time. So I'm really happy about that. Okay, so I think at the last meeting, I mentioned, I might have mentioned that I was considering moving Dallas Libby from pre-K into K. So I have, have since got some additional interest that I think works out for us and it works out for everybody. Dallas Libby really would like to remain in pre-K if she can next year because she's working on her backbone in early childhood. Shirley Schrader is actually, is, I am appointing her as a part-time Ed Tech 3 in kindergarten. So she's been in Ed Tech with us part-time for a while. She'll work with us for us until 12:30. And then after our pre-K kiddos are gone, Dallas Libby is going to move to kindergarten. So.
Oh, good move. That works.
Work with those.
So really, we only ended up with a higher than halftime person.
That's creative.
That's crazy.
Good.
Thank you. I have good ideas months of love. So, and Shirley will just be great. Shirley will be wonderful with those kindergartens. She's got lots of experience. Unfortunately, I don't have, I'm not announcing any kindergarten position tonight. I'm still working on that. And, okay, so now going to resignations. Okay, so I have three resignations. I have a resignation from Dawn Hunter, who has been in Ed Tech this year in special education. Dawn Hunter works a number of jobs and is just burning the candle at both ends right now and has had, is having a hard time just doing it all. So she's really sad to leave, but there's something's got to give for her. Jason Aceto, who has been our interim Title I teacher, just landed a job as a, as a high school socialist. um just landed a job as a so, as a high school social studies teacher in Vermont. His significant other just got um the dream of the job of her dreams. And so they're going um that direction. Um, so that opens up Title One as well. So uh we'll see what happens there. And our first grade teacher Rebecca Ellis has given her resignation and let me just. Yep, she has, uh, she has a message for you all. She says, um, "I have truly enjoyed being a part of the Rangey Lakes Regional School faculty for the past two years, and I feel so incredibly lucky to have been part of this school community. While I have truly enjoyed teaching at RLRS, I became a mother last June. And after much consideration, I will be resigning from my first grade teaching position to have more time at home with my baby. Teaching at RLRS has been such a great and rewarding experience, and I want to thank you all for making my time here so well." She also lives in J.
That's a long.
Especially with the baby. Daycare hours, that's just like, I don't. That's it. Well, thank you, Georgia. Very much. Yeah. We're gonna move on then to the action items. Uh, nine point one, we need a motion to approve the compilation and declaration of votes dated June thirteenth, two thousand three. And I'm turning that over to Roxanne at this point, right?
Yeah, it's very specific.
I was gonna say.
We think we're gonna have to read something.
It has to be something.
It's very specific.
Has to be read. Does it have to be read by a board member? I, yeah, does it have to be read by a board member on CNN?
I believe so. The board member has to make the motion with a specific one.
What about you guys?
I was gonna volunteer, but she walked by.
Well, I'm here. Does somebody else wanna read it before?
Don't hurry. You be my guest. I was just taking one for the.
Leave the ball, Mary. You got it.
Okay, the total number of votes. This is the regional school unit number seventy-eight compilation and declaration of votes. The total number of votes cast in all of the municipalities within regional school unit number seventy-eight, parenthetically, the RSU, in the affirmative and in the negative on Article One of the warrant and notice of election of the RSU budget validation referendum held June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three relating to the adoption of the RSU's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget is as follows. Dallas Plantation, thirty-two votes positive, five negative. Town of Rangel, three hundred votes positive, sixty-one negative. The Town of Rangel Plantation, seventeen votes positive, six votes negative. Sandy River Plantation, fourteen positive and one negative. They didn't like Bob, so they voted.
Sorry, Bob.
Yeah, what can I say? Total number of votes, three hundred and sixty-three in the affirmative, seventy-three in the, in the negative column. And the school board hereby declares that this article has passed. So at this point, it's dated June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and we all need to sign it. Is that correct? Okay, I will pass this around.
Second.
Thank you. We have, oh, we have to have a motion?
Motion to accept is read.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, and a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
And we all sign.
Then I'll pass it on.
Oh, it won't be. Okay.
You want to sign one coffee?
My own one. And then maybe Nicole, Nicole, you can hop it over to Joan when it gets down to your mom. Thank you. So we can move on then, if that's okay, to a motion to review policy E E A A dash R, request for overnight or out-of-state travel. Have a.
So moved.
Oh, you didn't realize that was gonna be going to the agenda, no?
Move the table or are you ready?
You wanna table it? We can until, we can table it until Joan.
I can speak to it.
Okay.
Um, so basically um, R is the procedure for um applying for an overnight or out-of-state trip. And really all we added to this policy was some budgetary lines so that we've had more information about what was, what was being budgeted so that we could prepare and plan better. That was, that was really, just updated that form.
And it, it, you'll notice on page two in your packet of the policy that it's a request to provide estimates on the cost of the following hotel, food, transportation, events, admissions and tickets, and a total estimate of the cost. So that particular thing which didn't come out in color on your copy, but you can see is highlighted, is the only additional change that's been added to the policy.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, can I have a motion?
To approve.
Motion to approve, but I have a second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. And may I have uh any questions or discussion?
No.
Just got, you made a question mark under the one, two, the third one down, what education standard is being addressed by this district?
Oh, you're right. It means a question mark. Okay, thank you. Yeah, no, you're.
See, I was thinking my head was, and then she needs to enter, you can, that's what it's good.
Oh, my goodness. So that's one addition. With that addition, all those in favor of us accepting the policy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Those opposed? Okay, passes. Okay, has the, didn't go it all the way around in this?
It's a question.
Kathy?
Yeah.
Okay, so then we have, I need a motion to enter into an executive session regarding the superintendent's evaluation.
So moved.
You get where you have to say.
Okay, motion in executive section one, MRS A, section four oh five, six A, superintendent's evaluation.
Yeah, I have a second. Second. All those in favor? Okay, so thank you.
Aye.
Don't worry about it, I'll leave it mine back.
I know, mine too.
We don't have to sit, why don't we just stand and do it?
Okay.
I make a motion into Executive Session 1, MRSA 4056D: Negotiations.
Second.
On my behalf.
Okay. That's all good, so that not free here. I'll set this free here.